Uh, seven o'clock. I'm calling this meeting of the Centralia Board of Aldermen and Public Utilities Committee. Roll call please, Tara.
Alderman Hudson?
Present.
Alderman Lee?
Here.
Alderman Magley?
Yep.
Alderman Rogers?
Present.
Alderman Norman?
Yes.
Alderman Moken?
Present.
All right, we do have a quorum meeting. The election can't take place. Please believe this, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, open the floor for our comments from citizens. If you have a comment to make, please approach the microphone. Uh, keep your name and address for the record. Make your comments. Tara, yeah? Close the comments from citizens. Appointments. I do have one appointment this evening to the Library Board. And that is, uh, consulted with the Library Board. And, um, Alan Bocka is, uh, the choice for being appointed to the Library Board. This is a three-year term. What's that?
Should we wait for the mayor to make his appointment?
Uh...
Nothing necessarily matters. You may be consulted, you know.
I mean, I already talked to the Library Board, and that's, uh, what they've asked to do, so...
You mean, you can delay it, and you... That's the preference of the board.
You're the one who's had the conversations. The library board should be the one to vote on.
The Library Board did have three people that were interested. They met Thursday night, and discussed it amongst them. And, uh, Alan Bocka was the choice of the Library Board.
Who would you accept your appointment?
Second. I have a motion to second. We'll accept the mayor's appointment of Alan Bocka to the Library Board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Uh, presentation of service awards. So, to ask Jim Lee to come up to the center here, please. So, this is a plaque presented to Alderman Jim Lee. Uh, award three Alderman. And it's an appreciation for your service to the city of Centralia, Missouri, two thousand thirteen to two thousand nineteen. Very good, sir. Thank you very much. I will say that I appreciate, uh, the service of all the, uh, board members. Uh, Jim's been instrumental in, uh, kind of counseling the tree board and other... He's served as the mayor pro temp for a number of years. And, uh, the chairman for the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee. So, thank you very much.
Please stand. This, uh, plaque is presented to Tim Breiki, mayor. An appreciation for your service to the city of Centralia from two thousand nine to two thousand nineteen. And I wish to thank you for your prior service, but we do appreciate that service as well. Thank you for everything. I appreciate that. So...
Do I say that, uh, it's been an honor to serve as the mayor? And, uh, I appreciate all the support from the board. Uh, multiple boards that we've had over the past, uh, nine years. Nine years. So, it's been a, uh... It's been a fun time. I've learned a lot. Learned a lot about how a city runs. Learned a lot about, uh, you know, it's not like a normal business. You know, it's a government business. And things tend to move at the speed of government, which is not fast. So, uh, I will always be, uh, part of Centralia. Everything I've done for Centralia has been from the heart for the community as a whole. And, uh, I've appreciated the opportunity to serve. So, very much. Certification of the election results. The results are in your packet. Just a roll call.
Uh, a motion? Just a motion?
Just a motion, okay.
Am I going to be accepting certification of election results as presented? Second?
I have a motion, maybe a second to accept the election results as presented by Brian Lennon. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Adjourned, signed, and adopted.
Am I going to motion or adjourned, signed, and adopted?
Second.
I have a motion, second, to adjourn, sign, and adopt. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. These are them. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Yeah. I will give up.
Thank you.
Jim?
Hey, Jim, take your name, please.
Jim?
What?
My name. I wasn't worried about the name. It was fine.
You were there, bro. All right. Thank you all much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, ladies.
Oh, yeah.
Take care.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Say... Please work in the...
Time's here.
Oh, yeah. I think I'm leaving yet.
You can sit down, Jim.
I'll sit down.
All right.
So, this time, the new elected candidates will approach the bench.
Approach the bench.
Tara will administer the oath of office, so, no, if you may want...
Congratulations.
I first pass.
I first pass.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the state of Missouri.
And the ordinances of the city of Centralia.
And the ordinances of the city of Centralia.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
I will faithfully demean myself.
In the office of man.
Of the office of mayor.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
Of said ci... Said city to the best of my ability.
According to law, so help me God.
According to law, so help me God. Get used to it.
I got... I got brought short this year. That'll be fine.
Crossing your fingers behind your back, though. Okay.
Ladies first.
You're messing with my...
Sorry. I wasn't implying that. I'm saying ladies first.
Show it again. Show it again. She called me best.
I turn my right hand. You solemnly swear that I will support the... See, she's living it down. And the state of Missouri. And the ordinances of the... And that I will faithfully demean myself. In the office of Alderman. Of said city to the best of my ability. According to law, so help me God.
Troublemaker one or troublemaker? Choose your...
Okay. Okay. So, that's any questions? I, Robert Hudson?
I, Robert Hudson.
You solemnly swear?
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Missouri?
And the Constitution of the state of Missouri.
And the ordinances of the city of Centralia?
And the ordinances of the city of Centralia.
And that I will faithfully demean myself?
And I will faithfully demean myself.
In the office of Alderman and said city?
In the office of Alderman and said city.
For the best of my ability?
For the best of my ability.
According to law?
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, David Wilkins?
I, David Wilkins.
You solemnly swear?
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Missouri?
And the Constitution of the state of Missouri.
And the ordinances of the city of Centralia?
And the ordinances of the city of Centralia.
And that I will faithfully demean myself?
Faithfully demean myself.
In the office of Alderman?
In the office of Alderman.
Of said city?
Of said city.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
According to law?
According to law. So help me God.
We're all gonna be swearing a lot.
These ladies are telling what to do. Oh, get him, buddy.
I, Tara Strang, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I, Tara Strang, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the state of Missouri.
And the ordinances of the city of Centralia.
And the ordinances of the city of Centralia.
And that I will faithfully demean myself in the office of collector?
And I will faithfully demean myself in the office of collector.
Of said city to the best of my ability?
And said city to the best of my ability.
According to law, so help me God.
According to law, so help me God.
So, I guess now I'm supposed to... Roll call, right? Okay, so, at this time, I'll ask for roll call for the meeting, uh, for all the...
Alderman Hudson?
Present.
Alderman Motley?
Here.
Alderman Moken?
Present.
Alderman Norman?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Present.
Alderman Magley?
Yep.
So, I guess the next thing on the elects is the, uh, election of president of the Board of Aldermen and Mayor Pro Temp. Told him by the, uh, Alderman. That, uh, the one who does that?
That they will nominate unless it's settled.
Okay.
Once we get that.
Okay.
And nominate Robert Hudson.
Second.
Close the nomination?
Are there any other nominations? Well, then, I take it there's not, so we'll take a vote.
Is there a roll call?
Yeah, this will be a roll call. I'm sorry. Okay.
And does it go or not?
Alderman Moken?
Four.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Norman?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Right now, we have election of the city clerk by the Board of Aldermen. The mayor's gonna nominate Tara Strang.
Second.
You guys to motion... This motion is to...
His is a motion to...
And then I'll accept. I'll second.
And then that one's a roll call as well.
I have to know.
Alderman? All right. Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Norman?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Well, okay, here we go. I'll be murdered by the cops. I'm not that slow a murderer. I, Tara Strang, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I, Tara Strang, do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the state of Missouri.
And the ordinance of the city of Centralia.
And the ordinances of the city of Centralia.
And that I will faithfully demean myself in the office of city clerk.
And I will faithfully demean myself in the office of city clerk.
Of said city to the best of my ability?
Of said city to the best of my ability.
According to law, so help me God.
According to law, so help me God.
So, the next one, the board will nominate the chair of the general government of public safety committee of Public Works and Public Utilities. Which will be Board of Aldermen as well.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so now, we're at the point where we're gonna have nominations for committee chairman. One is for the, uh...
General Government?
General Government. For Public Works.
Not exactly. And the second one is for Public Works and Public Utilities.
And the second will be for Public Works and Public Utilities.
Yeah, I thought the chair was the board of mayor.
The mayor appoints the chair of the committee.
Yes.
And it's just the mayor appoints, and there's no...
We don't even vote.
Like that. That's how it's been for the last eight...
See, I don't feel so bad.
You're okay. In the past, the board didn't have any say onto the committee chairs. Where it was the mayor just appointed the committee chairs.
Okay.
And they either accepted or not.
I don't know if I was going to just ratify the nomination.
Suggestions?
Yes, but...
Okay. Okay, that's right. All right, so nomination, I... I'd like to nominate, uh, for government and public safety, David Wilkins.
Second.
Second? Okay. This is a roll call. Hold it blue. Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and then, uh, the other nomination I'm gonna make is for, uh... For Public Works and Public Utilities. Jim Lee, I think, was in the last time, uh, for Robert Hudson.
You motion to accept the mayor's appointment, Robert Hudson, the chair.
Second.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, Mr. Hudson passes as well as...
And the motion will be adjourned?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The fastest, we're adjourned. All right, I'll see you next time.
I'm waiting, there's more.
Okay, so, um... I call to order the, uh, Board of Aldermen render meeting on Monday, April fifteenth, twenty nineteen, uh, here in City Hall chambers. And, uh, let's go. Roll call, uh, over the town.
Alderman Motley? Alderman Hudson?
Present.
Alderman Wilken?
Present.
Alderman Norman?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Present.
Alderman Magley?
Yep.
All right, we have a quorum then, because we have more than four, I would say. Is that correct?
Correct.
All righty. And then, uh... Now, I ask for the agenda. Have everybody got their agenda and approval change?
So, we get to the consent agenda, and then, um, they make a motion to approve the consent agenda as a rule.
Okay.
So, we ask for any comments like that.
Okay, everybody has agenda. I ask for any comments at this time about the consent of the agenda. Of the agenda, you've seen before. Anything?
And we're looking for anything that might be wrong or needs to be amended, like something we've reported.
Gotcha.
I make a motion, we accept the consent agenda as published.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? So, agenda approved. Okay, I need a motion to approve a count payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars, equaling five hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-three cents.
Make a motion to accept the count payable over one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and the grand total amount of five hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three and fifty-three cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, the count payable over twelve hundred and fifty dollars has been approved. At this time, we'll take comments from citizens. Any citizens would like to address the council? Come on, introduce yourself to the microphones. We'll take that as we don't have anybody this evening. Okay, I'm opening the, uh, public hearing for the sure rate increase at seven twenty-three P.M. No vote? No comments, I close the public hearing at seven twenty-four. Next, all, we have a discussion for, uh, regarding possible pre-tax or pay to public ordinance that was brought up at the last meeting of Public Safety when, uh, we brought before the council. Councils brought that up, so...
We had... Originally, I had put in ordinances in the packet to look at being, you know, possibly being passed tonight, but it needs some work on it. We need to add some sections of the city code. Um, and at city's advice, we need to have just a little bit more discussion and get this information out to, um, allow the business owners the chance to come and talk to the council. Um, so we'd like to put it on the agenda again from May twentieth, but open it up for discussion amongst the council for tonight.
Is this something we should do a public hearing on?
You can... Centralia was the poster child for passing this. They were the first city in the state to adopt an ordinance like this to do this. They did not have a formal local public hearing regarding this, but they did advise businesses that would be impacted by the ordinance and encouraged them to come to a council meeting they would like to, but they didn't actually hold a public hearing on.
I'm sorry, sir.
So, I would, um, like to just send the notice to these businesses and let them know that we are going to discuss it. Not necessarily with a public hearing, but just note that we're gonna discuss this on the next, um, Board of Aldermen meeting. Did you all get any feedback with this last, since we discussed it?
Right, I'm up. I talked to a couple people, and it's same sticky situation we discussed last time. Are we big government and mandate a business on what's something they have to do, but then we also gotta balance protecting our resources and being smart without impact. The time of our PD spending on stuff that, at this point in time, we're not solving too many, uh, things. Trying to find that balance.
Some of the feedback that she passed was received on, um, the business side, but it's more of the employee side, I think, is, yes, this would be very helpful because that if their drawer's short at the end of the night, some of these employees are having to come up with that money on their own. Um, and then there's another supervisor at one of the establishments that has to write up her employees every time that somebody drives off. So, that's just like the front and side, uh, but I have a call into Break Time Corporate. Return their call, and I haven't received a call back yet, but, um, I assume it's about this. So, I'll send a figure out from them, I'll let you all know.
Update information, seventy-two in the last twelve months. That's how many drive-offs we have.
We had one yesterday. Seventy-three.
How many have we solved?
Uh, we solved one yesterday.
And it wasn't...
I can't... I can't give you that one. I don't know. I don't know where I'm talking here. Um, but, like I said, it's, uh...
And I wasn't asking the employee's firm. I know they...
No, no. No, I know that. I know that. Uh, I'm aware of that. And the fact is, is, like I said, you know, seventy-three of these things, and it coincides with gas prices. I'll just let you know that.
Sure.
Because over the last two months, they've increased substantially. Okay? So, it's only going to get worse, you know, that the gas prices are going up. So, like I said, um, the city attorney's well aware of what we need to do and everything else. Like I said, I... I want y'all to discuss it, and I want y'all to get the public's input. Like I said, uh, one of the managers was gonna be here tonight, and she ended up having something else to do, um, come up at work, so... But, like I said, it's, uh, the feedback I'm getting locally is good. And I think those are the people we need to watch out for, because those are our citizens. And like I said, I understand your point too, Robert, um, about letting say business. Is that what we wanna do? But, uh, like I said, it's... It's... I... As I told you the other day, it's a tremendous drain on our resources, and we're responding to these things all the time, and the fact is, is it's... We can't refuse to respond. That's not what we... We cannot do that, so...
I can also tell you that when I grew up in Southern California, started driving in Southern California, that being able to go to the pump of gas without having already walked up and taken somebody who stole the car was a foreign concept for me when I got there. So, it's a lot of places...
It'd take a long... It'd take a long time to go over here, but...
A lot of places already do it.
Right.
But it's...
So, moving on to the agenda, we're on, uh, fiscal tax report. That's a motion for the mayor's...
Yeah, um, so in your packet there, the front page, there's a tax collection comparison. Top part compares this year's, or outstanding taxes this year compared to the same time last year. Um, and then the next section is real estate taxes comparison, uh, and then several years down at the bottom. So, if you all have any questions about that, please, or you ask Tara or me, we can help with that. And then the delinquent tax report is in your packet, and this is, um, just keep in mind that this is as of March thirty-first, the end of our fiscal year, so someone could have paid their delinquent taxes between now and... Then and now, um, but this is the report, and so, we just need a motion to approve the delinquent tax report from the county.
Someone?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approved the delinquent tax report. The Porto County Tax Abatements, a motion for it.
Another set of reports, and these are tax abatements from 2013. So your general revenue and parks, the, the way the taxes come in, they typically come in with your general revenue taxes and your parks and rec together. The total for those taxes is $231.66 that the county will abate this year. And then for your library and your library bond, and I will remind you that the library debt service is no longer on the tax bills. That's been paid back, so, but it would have been in 2013. So 2017 and on tax bills should not have that on there anymore. And that total is $91.17, and we just need a motion to accept those abatements.
You can accept the abatements, as listed, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Utility based, motion for the utility bill-based debts charged off as of March 31st, 2019.
So we keep a, our Phyllis actually keeps a list of all of the utility bills that are not paid as of the end of our fiscal year. At this time, we have an outstanding balance of $17,154.78. These are not active accounts, these are closed accounts, people have left and they owe money. At this point in time, we don't send them to collections, we just hold on to them and eventually collect them if they come back to town. We've been able to collect quite a bit of money over that period of time. Now, also keep in mind, if someone has a final bill on here from the end of March, it may have been paid by now. So some of these, the later ones could have been paid, or did you take them off? Okay, so they could have been paid. So we just need a motion.
I make a motion, we review utility bill debt charge-offs.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, accept. We have a motion of approving budgeted inter-fund transfers.
These are budgeted transfers, but we always have some at this first meeting. We're looking at $50,000 from the water fund to the general fund, $50,000 from the sewer fund to the general fund, $150,000 from electric to the general fund, and then $30,000 from the electric fund to the cemetery fund. We need a motion to approve those, is that correct?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Resolution, so... Authorizing signatures for accounts of fixed income investments located at Central Bank of the County.
So we have four check signers, we'll have two from the Board of Aldermen, the mayor and the mayor pro temp. And then the other two check signers, both city clerk and the deputy city clerk. We can only have one from each group, one from the board to sign and one from the city hall to sign. So this would change the signatories at the bank to Chris Cox as mayor, and Robert Hudson as mayor pro temp, to be able to sign those checks.
So, which is my read though? David, what? What do you mind reading?
Bill number five.
Two-two-nine-four.
Move the bill number two-two-nine-four be given its first and only read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Continue. A resolution authorizing the mayor, mayor pro temp, or a, and either the city clerk or the city of Centaria, Missouri to establish, open and maintain one or more accounts for the city of Centaria, Missouri, a bechan memorial fund and cemetery perpetual care fund. The fixed income investments located at Central Bank in Jefferson City, if you purchase government securities. I move the bill number two-two-nine-four be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Let's take a roll call. Vote.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yep.
Alderman Welkin?
Four.
By your vote, resolution. Bill number two-twenty-four comes resolution number...
R-19-08.
Now this is a different one here, I'll read them, okay. Next resolution is authorize the signatures for city checks, a resolution. I'd ask for Councilman Mormon to read the resolution.
Bill number?
Two-two-nine-five.
I move the bill two-two-nine-five be given its first read, uh, first and only read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This will be a roll call vote.
The bill to create a resolution entitled, "Resolution Authorizing Mayor, Mayor Pro Temp, the City Clerk, Deputy City Clerk, and the city of Centaria, Missouri, to sign certain back accounts of the city of Centaria, Central Bank of Boone County, and the city of Centaria, and other instruments on behalf of the city." I move the bill number two-two-nine-five be adopted by roll call.
Second.
Good. Roll call vote.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yep.
Alderman Welkin?
Four.
Okay, bill two-two-nine-five pass, resolution number...
R-19-08.
Permits and licensing, there's none. Legal. We have an ordinance authorizing contract for city website design. I'd ask that someone...
Here, cop, cop, take that.
Okay.
What did you do, see if there was a longer one?
Now I know. Bill number?
Two-two-nine-six.
Move that bill number two-two-nine-six be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centaria, Missouri, to execute a contract with MuniCo of Tallahassee, Florida, to provide website redesign, annual hosting, maintenance, and support services for the city of Centaria, Missouri. Move the bill number two-two-nine-six be given the second reading by title only.
Second.
Okay, and so we have a roll call vote, is that correct?
Yes.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number two-two-nine-six, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Centaria, Missouri, to execute a contract with MuniCo of Tallahassee, Florida, to provide website redesign, annual hosting, maintenance, and support services for the city of Centaria, Missouri. Move that bill number two-two-nine-six be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote then?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now roll call vote, yeah.
Alderman Welkin?
Four.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yep. The bill two-two-nine-six passes. Ordinance number?
Three-zero-one-five.
Okay. Next is the ordinance to repealing or replacing sections 26-118 of the city of Centaria code to set service charges for water provided by the city of Centaria, ordinance.
I did want to point out that at the request of DNR for our state revolving fund process, they have asked that we include the section in this ordinance that will be our rate increase for now, and for effective April 25th, and then, as well as the rate increase that will be effective April 25th of 2020. So those two things are in this ordinance, and it does spell out that the second section will not go into effect until April 25th of 2020.
Okay. So, can I ask a few of the other bill?
Take somebody.
Okay, how about Mr. Magna?
Just catch it on.
Bill number?
Two-two-nine-seven.
Move that bill number two-two-nine-seven be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and...
A bill created an ordinance titled, "An Ordinance, Appealing Section 26-118 of the Centaria City Code and Replacing It With A New Subsection, Section 26-118 of the Centaria City Code To Test, To Set Service Charges For Water Provided By The City Of Centaria, Missouri." Move that bill number twenty-two-nine-seven be given its reading by title, second reading by title only.
Second.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, roll call vote.
An ordinance repealing section 26-118 of the Centaria City Code and replacing it with a new subsection, section 26-118 of the Centaria City Code To Set, To Set Service Charges For Water Provided By The City Of Centaria, Missouri. Move that twenty, twenty-two-nine-seven be given, be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, roll call vote please.
Alderman Welkin?
Four.
Alderman Hudson?
Four.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yep. Okay, bill number two-two-nine-seven passes, ordinance number?
Three-zero-one-six.
Okay. Next ordinance is repealing or replacing section 26-125 and subsection 26-134 of the city of Centaria code To Increase Charges For Users Of Sewer System Provided By The City Of Centaria, ordinance.
We posted, the notice for this public hearing that we had earlier in the, I mean, in the March 13th edition of the Centaria, which I got, posted online on our website as well. No comments, we didn't hear any comments.
You know when those bills get home, they're all going to yell.
One twenty-six, one twenty-five, or should it be one thirty-four?
Where you at?
There's one twenty-five there. We have the new section of one twenty-six, one twenty-five, and the agenda says one thirty-four.
Oh, thirty-four. I think I copied that, there's no one thirty-four.
There's no one thirty-four?
No, one twenty-five.
That you're doing one twenty-five, okay.
And it, so, but the ordinance is correct.
Okay. Check my chair.
Thank you.
We're on. You all got me screwed up on this one, I'm telling you, so...
I'll play you.
No, no, we need to go over to the end, everybody gets to share this.
Robert, has he done wise?
You can do it, I want you to feel put out the first night we're together. So if you would please read, I appreciate it.
Bill number?
Two-two-nine-eight.
I move that bill number two-two-nine-eight be given its first reading by title only. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
An ordinance repealing section 26-125 of the Centaria City Code And Replacing It With A New Section, 26-125, To Set Service Charges For Users Of The Sewerage System Provided By The City Of Centaria, Missouri. Move that bill number two-two-nine-eight be given the second reading by title only. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Need a roll call vote. Oh, now if you read it soon.
An ordinance repealing section 26-125 of the Centaria City Code And Replacing It With A New Section, 26-125, To Set Service Charges For Users Of The Sewerage System Provided By The City Of Centaria, Missouri. Move that bill number two-two-nine-eight be adopted by roll call vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll second you, you said one here. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
That's if you second it.
So bill number two-two-nine-eight passes.
We need a roll call vote.
Oh, roll call vote for bill number two-two-nine-eight.
Alderman Magley?
Yep.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Borman?
Yep.
Alderman Welkin?
Four.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Okay, bill number two-two-nine-eight passes, ordinance number?
Three-zero-one-seven.
Now, with the purchasing section of the agenda, authorizing a contract renewal with the city area chamber of commerce for economic development services in the amount of $6,000 and no cents. If I could get a bill reading from Mr. Welkin's?
Oh, sure. Uh, bill number please?
Two-two-nine-nine.
Move the bill number two-two-nine-nine be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the city clerk to the city of Centaria, Missouri, To Execute A Contract With The Centaria Area Chamber Of Commerce To Perform Economic Development And Promotion Services For The City Of Centaria, Missouri. I'm going to bill number two-two-nine-nine be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to the city of Centaria, Missouri, To Execute A Contract With The Centaria Area Chamber Of Commerce To Perform Economic Development And Promotion Services For The City Of Centaria, Missouri. Move that bill number two-two-nine-nine be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
All in favor?
I think it's a all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now the roll call vote for bill number two-two-nine-nine.
Alderman Borman? Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yep.
Alderman Welkin?
Four.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
And Alderman Magley?
Yes.
Bill number two-two-nine-nine passes, ordinance number?
Three-zero-one-eight.
Next on the agenda is a motion of accepting the best proposal for security entry access panels To Be Installed On The City Buildings.
Lieutenant Crisp did the research on this, the access panels. The alarm communication center came in, but lower than the other company, and we feel that it would be a benefit, they already do the security panels for the rec center, the library, and the school offices, the school buildings. This would just allow us, instead of having the key entries and getting those keys back And Having The Possibility That They're Recreated By The Central Employees, We Can Actually Just Turn Off The Employees' Access With This, it's like a proximity card, Like When You Get 24-Hour Door At The Rec Center.
Same one the school has?
Yep, yep. And this is a budgeted item.
You answered my, that was gonna be my question.
Budget-wise, where are we at?
Well, we actually had this information in, so I think we budgeted fifteen, right at, right at fifteen, because we knew what we were...
Where's the power station fall in this, I mean, are they...
Are they included? No, they did not want to be included because of the garage doors and things like that. Are they included? No, they did not want to be included because of the garage doors and things like that and just.
So did the other company not vote they were bidding on?
No, I, I work for all systems, they're a really good company, but they're like, pretty, pretty, they're, they're.
That's a lot.
I hope that they accept the bid from alarm communication center for thirteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So, uh, with the motion passed to accept the best proposal for security access from alarm communication center incorporated.
Make the mark in the table.
Okay, approving purchase of upgraded utility building software from continental utility solutions to be table, motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next is a motion approving the best proposal for sidewalk replacement at the city hall and the police department.
We talked about this last Monday night a little bit, just because there was some concern with how much lower the low bid was from the others, but we have to get a feeler of PBR flatwork and they are confident that they can do the same job that everybody else would be doing for that amount.
He does, he does very good work, you know, I mean, I, I, I know personally and he's gonna get your money's worth. All concrete will crack, understand that.
Isn't this supposed to be the lowest the best bid? He says best.
I was like, I haven't seen the bid documents, so I'm hoping that it says, I mean, it's lowest and best. I mean, best always gives you the option to go with obviously not the lowest. And it just, as a side note, PBR was used in the City of Huntsville, Missouri, and they did do a really good job on some sidewalk work that that city had. So, I mean, I know one city has had direct experience with them, had a good result, you know, for what that's worth.
So we feel that in this case, the lowest, it would be the best bid. That would be staff recommendation to approve that.
I'd like to motion we approve the PBR flatwork, although see, it's a twenty thousand six hundred fifty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Approving the best proposal for sidewalk replacement by PBR flatwork. Last motion we have here is approving the purchase of a Ford interceptor SUV, motion approving that purchase of a Ford interceptor SUV.
We did advertise for sealed bids for this particular vehicle. We posted it on our website, did we post it on Facebook? And we put it in this to try and buy a strike guard. We received one proposal from Joe Watt, auto sales, which is who we bought the car from the last time. And our budget amount was thirty thousand five hundred and this proposal came in at twenty-one thousand forty-four dollars. We will also, under, as they arise. At the next meeting, we will have the car that this is replacing to be declared surplus property because we will list it on for sale on gov deals, like we did the last one.
Anything that'd be added to this once we get it?
No, this will be just like last year's, this will be in the last three hundred models.
Yeah, I really noticed that.
And it has everything on it and we have everything else. So I think we're gonna take out the old car and put in a new one.
I see they have a line item for their cup holder, can we save some money? I'm just wondering. Is this?
No, this is not mine. No, they can have.
I remember that. Ow! Great.
I move that we accept a proposal from Joe Watt Auto Sales for a total of twenty-nine thousand forty-four dollars for the twenty-eighteen Ford interceptor SUV. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those in passes for driving Ford interceptor SUVs.
Thank you all.
Deal cup holder there.
I guess not, I guess not, this time, because it's not my car.
We're moving on to section eight, old business. First is a motion changing the resolution number to accept memorandum of understanding with the Centaria Golf and Social Club from R dash nineteen dash oh six to R dash nineteen oh seven.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So the motion of changing the social club from nine dash sixteen oh six to nine dash nine, uh, R dash nineteen oh seven passes. Old business, discussion regarding Randolph Road project. I asked this to be put into the, into the agenda today. Having been newly appointed mayor and having walked the town of Centaria and talked to lots of people, there were about three things that came up on a regular basis and I felt it was a need to make sure that got explained by me and the representation of the people that had voted me in to make sure we had another discussion about it. There are both sides to this fence or this road, whatever you want to put it, but I thought I wanted to make sure that I was clear that we had a discussion about the road because in my findings, there was three things that came up consistently everywhere I went into the homes I talked to, one was the streets being unbelievable, this rain. I didn't get embarrassed, I've heard cuss words before, but I heard plenty about that, the streets of Centaria. If they knew anything involved about Randolph Road, it was not positive at all, the feedback at that time. I'd say seven out of ten people that I talked to knew nothing probably about it because they didn't mention it. So I'm gonna guess that probably there's a lot of people in town that don't know about Randolph Road really and what's going on out there, we know most people are uninformed, but I thought it was important for me to bring up the fact that there were folks that were talking about that issue, talking about the streets, talking about Randolph Road and how can we spend money out there for one business versus fixing our streets and bringing them up to current standards that are above average for the streets we drive on every day for the large majority of the people in town paying taxes. That being said, that came up. The third thing, if you're interested in what I heard consistently and I had to correct people on a regular basis, was as they put it, that damn building at the city ball, meaning they could know us. That's putting it nicely, people were worked up and freaked out about the roads, the streets, the roads, but that was a big one too, heard it more than anything and had to correct a lot of people, explain to them that the city did not buy the, that, that the parks is a separate entity of its own. I spent a lot of time explaining that, defending what the city had done and was doing. Same thing as I defended Chris Fink on the road out there, who approached too about the road and making demands and fairness. But that being said, the building was a big concern, my taxpayers, what was the justification? What was the need? Why didn't we add on, things like that to that? I explained that the city parks has their own budget, that the city, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the city basically is the accountant for their money and we don't subsidize them in any way, shape, or form. Okay? So I think it's, it's important for you folks that we're working for, the taxpayers, is to make sure that we know how to have that conversation in general about that and set people straight on the public libraries and the parks department because they, it's the city, but at the same time, it's coming out of their budget and I think that we need to manage it to such and make sure we're aware of it so we can have the right conversations with the right folks, okay? So the road was, was a big, a big thing, it came up. I have a concern and a feeling that as that road starts to go in, much more feedback will be given on the road to us, on the city council, mayor, that kind of thing, due to the fact that there's a lot of people that are ignorant to the fact of what's going on with that road. They don't get that move at all. You can fix ignorant, I'm very ignorant in a lot of ways, so I can educate myself and become educated. Stupid you can't fix, I didn't run until I had that, so it's been good. But that being said, there was a lot of conjecture, a lot of angst, a lot of things going on as I was out visiting about the, the streets or roads. And the one thing that bothers me that you need to know that has been talked about by contractors and developers, one was a rumor, that there was a rumor out there that, uh, Belk right here, Ron Stewart, that he would, if that building went in, he would put in duplexes and added housing on the road. He absolutely told me that that road shouldn't be being built for him in any way, shape, or form for added duplexes, as far as he was concerned. Said he'd heard about the rumor probably of development out there, probably he'd started that. So just had a visit with him about that, due to the fact it affects him. I went out and had a visit with Chris Fink as well, kind of getting a real understanding of what went on and went, because I think that that was back with the past city administrator and that we approached those folks about the opportunity for a grant. Wasn't approached by Chris directly at first to bring it on to us. Wasn't demanding we do something at that point, we were looking for avenues, I think, to probably figure out a way to build a road. So that being said, I wanted to bring it up, so it's off my conscience that I discussed it and I brought it up. I think the other thing too that concerns me is, and you can probably tell us better than anybody, but in talking to contractors, Ron being one of them, another one or two, I won't name them now, but if you'd like to have a discussion with these folks, I can sure take you to them, take you to their door where we can go have a visit. Real concern over the fact that they've developed roads and put roads into the city specification code, being, what is it, the thirty-seven foot wide curb and gutter or whatever it is?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, alright, they had a foot, thirty-eight curb and gutter. And with the proposal and the engineering and the way I understand it, and absolutely correct me if I'm wrong at any time, because there's a lot going on here and I'm trying to keep up with what people want to know, that we have now moved the road to twenty-four foot wide and there are gonna be seven foot shoulders of, of, pack. No shoulders, I'll pick shoulders out of it. So, but that's what's gonna be out there, that's what the road would consist of and what the road would be. Now, we have set precedent of our own specification of streets and roads that we've now gotten a special committee to give us a variance to, that we hold contractors and developers on a daily basis to turn those streets over to us pending thirty-eight feet curb and gutter. So as far as I'm concerned, that is a big issue because we'd have now set a precedent that in the court of law would carry a lot, a lot of weight. So I don't know if we're trying to make the shoe fit the foot, but the foot's a certain size and we're trying to, trying to, trying to make the shoe fit the foot maybe, I don't know. Those are my thoughts, I've thrown out here and this is not to attack anybody, the work that's been done. I know, I know Don's feelings on this, talked to him about it. I just felt that I have to absolutely, on behalf of the city, the people of the city, to bring this up and discuss it because that's one of the reasons I was elected to bring things forward, just as Tim was when he ran and he's ran, he's heard things. Bottom line is, I'd bring it up. Now, I'm open to any debate or discussion about it, it's not really debate, it's just I wanna bring it up and make sure everybody's aware of what I've heard.
I think many of us are aware that it's not an easy thing to move forward on and it took us a long time too and this board was split, planned simple. But as a board, some of us reluctantly, myself included, decided we'd move forward up through the quoting process and that's, we're working towards that. And there's been no final vote made on if we move forward or not.
Understood.
And I know from my perspective, the reason we went with the narrow road was to lower the cost, because at the full length, the cost of it, I won't vote for it, I'll just put that out there. I mean, if we went for the full thing curb and gutter on both sides, I can't see us spending that much money. But with the grant money and the designated funds and if the city had put in a small amount of money on top of that, it might be worth swallowing. But if we were looking at, what, a seven hundred thousand dollar package, a couple hundred thousand dollars of the city money, I don't think I could have voted for that, because I agree, the roads in town, we got some roads we need to work on and I'd rather see the money there and the people I've talked to have said the same thing.
The question I would ask, because you folks have wars that you got voted in or that ran and got voted in, have you had any feedback about the road that's been positive or any feedback at all? Has anybody said anything to you at all in the past about the road?
I haven't heard anything positive about us doing the, and that's why I was voting the way I was.
I've heard, I've heard a lot of negative. I'm not gonna lie, because I'm in that business and, so, I haven't heard any positive.
I didn't show up to absolutely impress upon any of you folks my will at all. I just want to make sure that we're clear about what we're talking about and I think that the question I would have, and I think it's fair to ask, is the engineering we done, it's gonna be, if we get that done, we get the bids, which I think we should, sounds like to me we should probably finish off because we're in that process at this point, I think that's very fair. But I think at this point, we need to make sure that, I guess we get engineering, we'll have that done, that's work we paid for. We had a two hundred thousand dollar grant, how much have we spent trying to meet the grant requirements? Would be my question at this point, mayor, I'd like to know that that, what ballpark it only be the dollar?
Fifty-five to sixty thousand dollars on the generic.
Fifty-five to sixty, okay.
So far.
So far. And that's not an easement yet?
No, no, they've not built the easements yet.
Do you have any idea what easements would cost in the general ballpark?
He said seventeen thou, no, sixteen thousand.
Just wanna know the facts.
But that was for four and they're not having to get as many easements as what they originally thought because we changed the design of it, so it should be less than that.
It should be, it was up two sixteen.
It was up two sixteen, not to exceed.
I don't think, it was a not to exceed, wasn't it?
So, anyway, that's, that's the discussion and, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I'm willing to see what goes on here and at some point we'll be up against what we think we need to do. At some point, that makes sense?
Yeah, this all has to come to a vote again.
Understood, and I, I'm not gonna go into your man vote, I just want to make sure that, that I brought it up because I felt I was obligated to do such.
Clear your conscience.
Well, you know, yeah, do I have opinions? Sure, I have opinions, you all find out that I have opinions. But mine are usually based in fact and concern about future state and what we're gonna have to deal with is the representative constituents of this town. So enough of that, if nobody else has anything they want to say about it.
Well, it is not uncommon for cities to not follow the requirements that they make other people do.
As the city government. And this is an economic development piece more so, so it's not as, I mean, that's kind of, it's an odd combination of a city changing its own specifications for itself and for economic development. So this would definitely not be something that I hope would establish a true precedent and would have to go through another exception through the board of adjustments again and then be brought back to the board to be voted on like it was last time. So there are a couple of safeguards.
And it's not that this shouldn't be a thirty-eight foot street, it's a matter of what we can afford now and with the idea that this would be added on to at some later date to widen the street to go with.
So keep hearing what we can afford, what we can afford, I've heard it four times now.
How, how are they coming all the plans?
The last three, talk to them, they will work out, we haven't heard from them since.
Haven't heard from them.
They'll reach out.
Can we follow up with them and, and let's fire them?
So playing out, we're waiting on the plan adjustments and then we're gonna send out for quotes?
And then they will do that process for us because, you know, since we have CDDG money here, there's certain requirements that have to be included in this bid document, so the engineers are well aware of that and they'll take care of that for us.
I know this has come up, I don't know how long we've been talking about this, but the grant?
A year.
Is that timed out yet or?
No, it's about a year.
We have another year.
It's a three-year grant, we're a year into it.
But the whole project gonna be done?
The whole project has to be done right now in two years. Completely finished. And we, we don't have this.
Hopefully we will have final plans so we can be put out for bid before, or we'll get dealt this year.
Well, what is, what is, I mean, I, I've done, I've done a lot of projects and I've quoted a lot of bid packages. I'd like to know what we think is a reasonable amount of time for us to get this back and how long they had it and been working on the engineering part of it.
Since we made a final, the board made a final decision, we called them that week and discussed it.
I knew that wasn't the first one.
Is it bid about three months? They made it with them in January?
I was thinking two. The last time.
It was in January or February, I was thinking it was January.
It was in March when you. It was first.
Then March would, that was first March when we did it.
Yes, six weeks. Just, I'm wondering. I just wanted to make sure, you know.
First discussion was actually.
Got you.
I want to approve the extra sixteen days or whatever in March.
So that's sixteen thousand is what we're paying for now to get this information back to be able to get bids out.
That's the, that's the easement.
And so there's fifty-two that we're at. What's the cost gonna be for us to get this? Is it to pay for the engineering or is that what we pay today and it's gonna be another engineering fee once we get this back?
The engineering fee was up to seventy thousand dollars and then plus the sixteen thousand. So we're looking at right at eighty-six.
Now, okay. Now we're getting the full real number out there to me and what we, we spent of the grant so far. So that being said, um.
That wasn't sent to any of the grant.
We haven't received the grant money.
That's not grant money.
Understood. We, we've spent eighty thousand dollars of taxpayers' money that we're all gonna have to answer for at some point if we don't do the road or if we do do the road. That's my point. So that's what these people are gonna go eating on our rear ends about. And I just wanna make sure we're unified team of knowing what that is. The one thing I'll guarantee is, Mayor, if we make a decision in here and even if I'm opposed to what that decision is, I will go to the streets, to the constituents, the people I have looked in the eye and I will support what we did because we will have had the facts to have done it. And if we can be all on the same page of what we did. And we all need to be on that, on, on that as a team. If it didn't go our way, then we represent the city. If that's what the more majority was to vote in then, then that's what we do. We support that. Is that fair for me to have an expectation as mayor? You know, I, I hope it is. I don't think it's asking too much. So, you know, I know there's a change and my personality is different and I guess, I understand it's bureaucracy and, and, and politics and, and government. I, I get it. But at the same time, the squeaky wheel gets the oil, so maybe we're gonna have to squeak a little more to get some of this stuff back. And I'd be glad to be a squeaky wheel as helping any way I can moving forward. So I just wanna kind of get that off my chest because I had so many people over, so, you know, it's been a, it's been a great race. It was a good campaign. Lot of people, lot of voters. There was a lot of interest in this. And I think it just shows there was a lot of concern and a lot of people invested in our city, which is pretty impressive when I think the average was fourteen percent in the, in the voter ballot that were around. So it was, it was, it was good, I think, representative, uh, representation of Centraria's desire to be involved. Surprisingly. So, thank you. That's all I got on it. So we'll move on to new business.
And that's you.
And that's me and I've got to do, the mayor. Well, the mayor's been carrying on a little bit. I get it, but, uh, had to get that off my chest. You'll get to know that I'm, I'm direct. I'll, I'll, I'll tell you the truth. Don't ask if you don't want the truth. And I'll try to work with anybody and try to come to any resolution next session with the majority of people. Alright? So now we're here. Logan Fager, part-time or full-time police officer effective May first, twenty nineteen. I have to go to just make that appointment if I have to be himself.
Yeah, you said that you'd make that appointment and then somebody will.
Okay, I'm gonna make the appointment for, uh, Logan Fager for, um, part-time and full-time police officer effective May first, twenty nineteen. All in favor? All opposed?
That's Logan Fager.
Uh, city administrator now, uh, for monthly reports.
My monthly reports in the packet. If you have any questions, please let me know. Mike did not make it into the packet last time, so it has also included the bad questions. He's here. He can answer the questions.
Three, this is on you, right? Request to block off?
Oh, yeah. So there, I had written something up too. Apparently it's not in the packet, but, um.
There's a picture in the packet.
There's a picture.
There was something in the first packet, but I think we revised.
And then revised, doesn't have it in there.
Um, so reclaimed furniture? It's reclaimed furniture. Brad Page is requesting to block off just this block of Jenkins Street. This is behind Pringers and Extreme Mart, uh, between, uh, just for an event on May eleventh to twelfth. It's a Saturday and Sunday. And it, they said it would just help them to not have, uh, the delivery trucks running through so that they could have their event, uh, open at.
So that guy's still refurbishing. I'm glad to see something he does. That's that old church, right?
Yeah, that's the old church.
Has anybody, uh, dated or checked with Pringers at the same issue?
I was gonna ask because the fact is, I mean, they have trucks in and out all the time.
Yeah, I don't think they normally receive on the weekends.
But those trucks are running over water meters along this street too, so we're gonna have to discuss that with them as well. Because they're breaking.
Yeah, they're, they're not only on, getting off property on one side, they're on the Turkish side too where the refurbished furniture place. So they're gonna have to do something to help us outline in that back there.
So we have not, I didn't, I did not, I have not checked with Pringers. It looked like everything's completely open from one end to the other, like from, uh. Yeah, it's, well, from, uh.
Church is right over here.
The alleyway right behind them. It's open, I can't think of the street. So then they wouldn't have to come down Jenkins and turn. They could go straight across. Collier. Yeah. So it's open from Jefferson to Collier.
It's over here where that, uh.
Straight through. So they would just have to drive straight through instead of turning for two days. On Saturday and Sunday.
Can they get all the way through?
They can't back up the docks. Only thing they can't do.
I didn't remember that.
How long is the mail? All day long? Is that what they want it for all day?
Saturday and Sunday.
Saturday and Sunday. Both days?
Not really is.
Both days. They asked for, well, they asked for one or both. They would like both.
I'm making most. We give them both days.
I'll say that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the city attorney?
So I have a quick update. I am working with Heather on a property located at Marianne the Baptist Church. It is a historical black Baptist church that's located here in Centraria. But if you've been by it lately, it's, it's in pretty rough shape. I think a lot of. What? Is that the one south of D and D? Yes.
Oh, that church?
It was full of trash.
Well, I don't, I don't know what it's full of yet, but I, we have, I have reached out to the Missouri Baptist Association through their other local Baptist church here to try to find out who actually owns the property. Because many times churches, the association, like at least, they will own the property, not necessarily the congregation.
Not the Baptist churches. Baptist churches are, um, local congregation not.
But they were not able to direct me to anyone to complete me any guidance. So what I have done is I have sent out letters through the Secretary of State's website. There's basically a listing of officers from Marianne the Baptist Church. And so last week I sent out letters to all four, the president, vice president, treasurer, and secretary just to see if somebody would respond back. The city is interested to see if they would, you know, want to join to partner with the city to tearing down that structure to get that lot cleaned up. So that's, that's one of the things.
So a church, the, the church, a church owns, we try?
We believe the last.
The church owns, but the church has been defunct for many years.
Yeah.
The last officers, they, they had very little luck writing them down.
Yeah, but I understood.
So we're, we're trying. Your, your prior mayor, Beck, tried this as well. So we're doing what we can because the next thing would be is if it, if nobody responds. I mean, the possibility would be, you know, is this a dangerous structure? Do we need to down that road? So we're trying to, trying to go down the path of least resistance at the moment and see if somebody responds to us. So we're gonna try that first. The other thing is that, um, myself and I think Tara are meeting with Judge Morell Monday after municipal court. So Judge Morell is new to the bench. There is going to be significant changes rolling out from the Missouri Supreme Court on the way municipal court is structured, the way city prosecutors can interface with municipal defendants. And generally it's going to be driving more attorneys to become involved in municipal cases. So Judge Morell will be meeting with city staff and myself to kind of go over some of those changes and her expectations on how she wants to run municipal court. Um, we have a trial set for Monday in municipal court, so if anybody wants to see a municipal court trial, come on down. About eleven o'clock maybe, so. Well, maybe to reset the business. Lieutenant Crabs is our witness, has been subpoenaed for another more important matter at the same day and time, so we won't know until the middle of this week whether or not we'll be able to pursue forward with that depending on his availability. So that's my update.
Okay. We got the city first.
Uh, there is an MML meeting here in Centraria on May twenty-second and it will be held at the East Annex. I've heard all of you to go. If you want to, please let us know so we can make your reservations. Um, I've also given you, um, you guys have them in your folders in a late amount in front of you guys, but in June, there is an MML elected officials training. So let us know if you would like to sign up for that. It's two days and it's in Columbia. It looks like they have a lot of really good information. It's a very good program.
Any business that has may arise. Attorney, other business, good point?
What about our puzzle piece that, that was discussed about?
We're waiting for.
Eighteen hundred dollars if we.
Oh.
Is the city wanna sponsor it? I guess was what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, this makes up the whole county.
There, there's supposed to have a, uh.
Listening session.
A listening session in, in all these places. The start date has not been set yet. Uh, we will probably, we'll be one of the last to motion the other.
So is that something that we're all still entertaining to say for our part of the?
I don't know if that. Come on, anybody else has something to say.
If you all are interested, we can discuss it now and then put it on the agenda for next month, on May.
Don, then, then wasn't Chamber gonna put some money in?
Chamber will probably put some money in too.
Maybe I can talk to Jenny and find out if, maybe split it?
We'll split it or something like that.
Be interested in that?
And if other people wanna be involved in it, we'd be more than willing to split it more than two ways. Three or four ways.
I was scheduled to go to the Partners in Governance Conference on the seventeenth of April, which is this Wednesday. I don't know if you've got somebody else that you wanna send to that. So I took the MML and it's, uh, in Columbia.
I'm making a motion.
Where are we at on, uh? What's that game of the?
We have not heard back yet. I haven't heard from Lincoln in a little while.
But we've got everything in place at this point.
Yeah, yeah, we're just waiting on the bids to go out. And he has all of our bid language, everything that we would normally need.
But the bids haven't gone out yet?
I don't think so. I haven't seen them.
I'll stop by and talk to him. I'll, I'll stop by and talk to him tomorrow.
Thank you.
Because it should be nice for the bids to go out so that they can actually do something.
I know.
There's a lot of people. Yes. A lot of people want the brick.
Did we, we've talked about filling a pond in, is that still a thing with that brick?
Which pond you talking?
I think whoever picks it down gets the brick. That's part of it.
Yeah. That was my understanding. Whoever gets it takes it, you know, take that place to build it. And several people I've talked to have got places to build it, so.
So there's people that are looking to bid on it and we're just waiting for the bids, uh, the bid.
Yeah, I've got about three or four people that have called to say make sure we get them on there, so. You have a list of who this, those people are?
We've been, I think, kind of a list of people. I have cards and things and I don't know.
I'm done.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? All opposed? Your turn.
And I need that photo of the, we all remain, the aldermen and the mayor together, please.